Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order at 6:03 PM. Let's see, Gabe, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? Thank you. Okay, and can we please get roll call?
Alternate Commissioner. Uh, Getus. Mr. Liad, President.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Figueroa.
Present.
Vice Chair Navarrete.
Present.
And Madam Chair, Vitan.
Present. Thank you. So we're gonna move on to approval of the agenda. At this time, the commission may announce any items being pulled from the agenda, or continue to another date, or request the moving of an item on the agenda. Do my fellow commissioners have any comments or requests for this item?
I was just mentioning one thing, Chair, is that there's two items, we'll go into them under the public hearing, but there's two items that were best drawn. The other one is if we can move up item five before four, because there is applicant for that one. Number four, the issue, so. Not really so late. So five would be before four, or last time.
And I think I saw an email about item number four.
Yes, that one came from me. And so when we get to it, you know, I'm gonna be recommending.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move on to approval of the minutes. This is for planning commission meeting minutes for May 4th, 2022. And I'm gonna go ahead and not vote on this since I was absent. But would anyone like to make a motion for the approval of meeting minutes made fourth?
Did we take?
Oh, apologies. Yes, we did not. Okay, can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda with moving item number five before number four.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and second Commissioner Figueroa's motion.
Thank you. And can we get roll call, please?
Commissioner Liad.
Hi.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Figueroa.
Hi.
Vice Chair Navarrete.
Hi.
Madam Chair.
I, thank you, and apologies for that. Okay, so we're gonna move on to approval of the minutes. This is for planning commission meeting minutes for May 4th, 2022. And I'm gonna go ahead and not vote on this since I was absent. But would anyone like to make a motion to approve these minutes, or any recommendations, or suggestions, or changes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minute as presented.
Thank you. And can we get a second?
A second.
Thank you. And can we please get roll call?
Commissioner Liad.
Hi.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Figueroa.
Hi.
Vice Chair Navarrete.
Hi.
And Chair Vitan.
I'm gonna go ahead and abstain since I wasn't present. Okay, so we're gonna move on to written communications. Do we have anything from staff or from?
None that staff.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to public comments on non-agenda items. The public may address the commission on any item of interest to the public that is not on the agenda, but is within the subject matter jurisdiction thereof, please let me your comments to three minutes. And do we have any public comments?
There are no comments that.
No. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move on to reports and requests. Do commissioners have any requests on this item, anything that they'd like to see from staff, discussion on the agenda? No? And staff, do we have any reports?
No, none from staff.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna move on. We don't have anything for our non-hearing items, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to our public hearing calendar. And we'll start with item number two, Gunther Investments, and this is for interim outdoor cannabis cultivation, conditional CUP. Sorry, conditional use permit, CUP 348.
I think there's a brief presentation for this one. So with this pretty quickly withdrawn. So the applicant on this is Gunther Investments, and they were requesting a conditional use permit in order to have an interim outdoor cannabis cultivation operation on 38.48 acres. This would be on existing farmland at the southwest corner of Avenue 50 in Fillmore. So here's a vicinity map that shows the location. This is east of the 86 Expressway and north of Avenue 52 in the stop. So the applicant has requested withdraw their their application. And so we had went through the process, but you know, the the last before the public hearing, the applicant through a question withdrawal doesn't end with the the project anymore. So that's the end of my staff report. And if you have any questions, feel free to let me know. I don't think the applicant is an audience, but they did provide a letter that's provided as an attachment to this report, just stating that they are withdrawing their item.
Okay, thank you.
Henry, I think there's no further action needed on this other than the state item withdrawn, correct?
You're correct, Gabriel.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move on to item number three, and it looks like it's the same. The applicant has also withdrawn their application.
Correct. We'll just pull that real quick, so you can get an idea where the property is at. So this item, the applicant's DAPCO 3 LLC, and they were proposing interim outdoor cannabis cultivation, CUP 349, and this was at the location the northeast corner of Avenue. Avenue 52. And sorry, Avenue 52 in Fillmore Street, as shown on the vicinity map. The toy bridge on this was 200 acres. The applicant no longer plans proceed with with this project, is requesting to withdraw their application. The applicant did provide a letter, similar letter to the last one, stating they plan to withdraw their their project.
Okay.
No further action would be needed by the.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna move on to item number four. Well, item number five that was moved up to item number four. And that is JJWR Holdings Manufacturing and RB Storage Project. Whenever you're ready, staff.
Presentation on this side of. So this item for you today is the applicant is JJWR LLC. And they propose a manufacturing Harvey storage project in the city Pacella in our industrial park near our corporate yard. With this application is a tenant parcel map for to create a condominium map on the property and create industrial condominiums and for for warehousing as well as office space, conditional use permit 354 and architecture review 2107. This project with the construction of two industrial buildings, each 25,750 square feet. And they would create a total on the site of 32 warehouse condominiums, eight office condominiums in the size of 3.29 acres, and it's actually on two properties. This is a vicinity map that shows the two properties. They both have existing addresses. It's in sub area number seven of our our general plan. And you could see Enterprise Way and to the south is Avenue 54, surrounding quite a few vacant uses. There is a industrial metal building to the rear of this property near the railroad. And then to the east is Enterprise Way, and then across the street is the city corporate yard as well as the Jehovah's Witness Building that's that's there as well. So what does the applicant tend to do? You know, I took a visit to their existing operations in the city of India. So they do have an operation where they manufacture and craft decorative wood and paneling systems. So this is what it looks like in their distance facility. So the applicant indicated that they're too big for their current facility and are looking for a larger facility that would be in the city of Pacella and would be operating out of one of the buildings that they are proposing. So this is an example of what it could look like inside. You kind of see a lot of the stacked wood and some of the machinery that's used for for doing this. Probably the applicant could explain that a little bit better than than I can. But here's an example of what their final product looks like in a lot of images for interior decorative designs for residential commercial operations. So this is the site plan. So the site plan, obviously, you can see the two buildings were located to the center, but their circulation around each of the buildings, there are three driveways that are proposed from Enterprise Way. The driveways would be the city standards for for driveway approach. The applicant would be responsible for constructing a sidewalk along the street which they are proposing to do. The driveways would be gated on all three driveways. There actually wouldn't be a complete wall on the frontage. There wouldn't be a wall in front of the buildings. The buildings kind of would serve as the barrier behind next to the gates. You could see on this plan, the offices are proposed to the front of the the buildings. And then the warehouses behind the office units. The applicant does propose parking, but they do satisfy those parking requirements, and we'll go into that in a bit. But the parking is proposed along the perimeter of the development. There is a trash enclosure, large trash enclosure to the rear into the middle of the project, and there's a large loading area at the northwest corner of the of the development. You can see on the south side, there is a large retention base that they need to capture water on the site for stormwater. The floor plan is as follows. So each of the buildings look like this. They're they're mirror images of each other. So there are 16 unconditioned warehouse units, ranging in size from 1,320 square feet or 55 by 30 feet to 1,575 square feet or 55 by 24 feet. There are four office units on each floor. So this is actually a two-story building on the office portion of the building. And so you can kind of see the stairway, and it goes to the second floor of the office units, and the office units are 250 to 200 B square feet. There are restrooms associated with those office buildings, but there's also a restroom unit on the second floor. And there's a restroom units that would serve the warehouse portion of the project to the rear, so you can kind of see the smaller restrooms. Those are unisex restrooms. This is the elevation of the building. So the building is hard to be constructed a block and and like a metal buildings, and then they have some pop outs around the windows. There's only windows shown for this, though, even though it's a two-story building, only windows are shown on the first floor of this. And then you can kind of see that block wall extending between the the two buildings to the sides, you know, largely kind of blank walls. We did express that we were concerned about the the architecture of the building in terms of just kind of having a blank wall. And so what the applicant said to do is concentrate just kind of the variation architecture more towards the front. And they kind of pointed out to some of the existing industrial buildings in the industrial park. The other thing they decided to do is include some like color bending, they can see in the blue. But largely, the sides of the buildings are constructed of corrugated metal. And then the rear of the buildings counts like this, so it has the that metal corrugated metal and in the blue bandy you see in the rear. There's a large roll-up door in the back and smaller doors that access the warehouse. This is the materials board. So so even though it looks like a blank span some sites, this is how those sites open up, and this would allow for access for industrial uses, but also for the RB storage. And so the applicant does propose RB storage, they indicate how many of the sort of units that they would propose. And I'll go into that in a bit, but there is a condition of approval that states that the RB stored would only occupy 50% of the building. One of the of the entire project. They give an indication of what that blue bending would look like in that picture. You can kind of see there. And then there shows the block and then the corrugated metal that they're proposing. Here's the landscape plan. So there's landscaping proposed throughout the the site. They do meet the landscape requirements for onsite landscaping. A lot of that landscaping is concentrated on the frontage of the development, based on Enterprise Way. And the combination of trees and shrubs with the landscaping and the building elevations, this this is gives you an idea what it might look like along the frontage. So you can kind of see there's the gates, three driveways, buildings, the max height on the buildings are 24 feet. And then they, you know, they proposed kind of different layers, the landscaping, so you have like palm trees, but then you have shade trees. And then you have the shrubs. The landscape plan is as follows. So there's different types of trees that are posed, the crepe myrtle in the Chilean misty and three different types of palm trees. And this is the landscape palette for the plants and shrubs, everything from desert casia to bula bellias to red yuccas. So there's kind of a variety they propose for the plants. And I'll go back to the landscape plan again. So you can see a lot of the trees are are located towards the site. Actually, we do have a landscape requirement for trees every 10 parking spaces. So that's not really met in the rear. So probably, I'm just noticing right now, the the plant commission may want, I would recommend adding a condition about that for every 10 parking spaces. But that's largely met around the development. As far as zoning consistency, so this is the MH heavy industrial zone in the city. And that's different than one of our other districts, which is the MS manufacturing service zone. The heavy industrial zone allows you to do more intense industrial uses than the MS zone. And so how it works is this, if you go into the municipal code, it will identify that all permitted uses in the MS zone are allowed as primary uses. And so there's there's some staff have a little bit difficulty with this is, and we presented this in the staff report, doesn't say that all conditional uses are permitted. And the MS zone just said all uses are permitted in the MS zone. So really, trying to figure out what the intent was by that, was the intent to include all permitted uses? Or was it all permitted uses and conditional permitted uses? And so the reason why that's important is on this next slide. So if you were to look at all the permitted uses in the MSO, and then the conditional uses, right? So C, it says conditional uses, it allows for mini storage. And if you're familiar with the Luxor Luxor RB storage project, they were found to be similar to Mini Force facility with the CUP, but that was in the manufacturing service zone. So now we have a project that's supposed to do some RB storage. The heavy industrials, we haven't allowed RB storage before. And so and so what the planning commission would need to do is say, okay, it's allowed with the conditioning use permit, they're posing, and and you would have to just make that finding, which is included in the resolution to the staff report. Um, as far as zoning consistency, these are the standards, they they need all the standards for the zone for parking. They they provide 95 parking spaces, and they're only supposed to provide 70. So they're they do provide enough parking. They meet a lot of requirements for the zone as well as the landscape requirements. So they're consistent there. As far as general plan consistency is in that sub area seven that's shown here. One of the the items mentioned in their vision is that the use of beach shop producing. And because of the 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 business that's moving from India to to this, so we believe it's still a job producing use because of that. But one of the items under our compatibility for the industrial zone does mention that automotive uses would be more of a secondary use. And so as long as that the decorative wood panel manufacturing is kind of the primary use, then, you know, staff does recommend a global project with art and storage. As far as our environment to review, the project would be considered infill project under sequence, and because the site is under 5 acres. So staff does recommend the plant commission adopt the resolution for the town parcel map that would create the condo map that's shown in the form plan and the the conditional use permit and architecture review and as proposed. And if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. The applicant is in the audience and in case you have any questions or in case they would want to make.
Thank you, Gabe. Um, before we open up the public hearing, do commissioners have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, you said the average is 24. Is that consistent around all both buildings, or does it go up or the living quarters is up?
Oh, yeah, the 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 highest point is 24 feet.
Is it 24, and then you're building underneath it, the condos or living quarters is?
Yeah, I believe it's.
The second out, the second elevation? So it would be 10 feet and probably 12 feet.
Like a side elevation, maybe. I think it's all consistent.
It doesn't go any higher than 24. That's my question. It doesn't.
Yeah, it didn't go higher.
Okay, so it's built within a 24 inch, 24 feet range?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I like it. Thanks.
The other thing I want to mention is that there is a requirement that rooftop equipment is screened, and that's shown on the elevations too.
Is that the four-foot parapet wall or?
The parapet wall.
Okay.
The rooftop equipment.
Perfect, yeah, nice.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Are they proposing any signs?
There's no sign right now proposed, but they could also propose it after the fact. And so that would just be like an administrative approval. But yeah, and then maybe the applicant has maybe a what kind of sign.
Do we? Do we have a sign ordinance for the industrial park or?
Yeah, this is just the standard sign ordinance for allowing them to do a monument sign and then signs on the actual buildings.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing at 6:26 PM. And do we have any public comments?
My name is, oh, yes. So I'm, my name is Benjamin Egan. I am the applicant's civil engineering representative. My office address is 46150 Commerce Street, Suite 100, India. So I want to thank, first of all, Gabriel Perez for an excellent job on the presentation of the staff report. Gabe, can you, I just wanted to address a couple of questions that came up. Could you please bring up the site plan? Is that feasible to do?
Yeah.
On parking and the trees, I wanted to point out something just really quickly, because he mentioned something about adding a condition. So can we get the site plan? Okay. Um, so if you can see, because this is an industrial facility, we need to keep the drive-by as open as possible. But we do intend to plant trees around the perimeter. So do you see the diamonds along the retention basin and the diamonds on the other side? Those are tree lots. We do intend to put some trees there.
I'm gonna go last.
There we go. Yeah, go back to that. So when I start counting the number of trees, are you sure we didn't quite meet the the one tree per 10 spaces? Because we have quite a few there. And I wasn't sure when you did the math. Did we do that based on the 70 required or the 95 we're providing?
The only thing I was basing on is looking at the rear where it did have a tree there, but maybe you achieved it by putting down like.
Yeah, I have them down the sides, and I only calced it for the 70. Because I didn't think we should be penalized to have provide extra trees because we're providing extra parking. If I'm wrong about that, we can add a couple of trees and reuse the math. But I just want to make sure I address that comment that Gabe brought up.
Okay. Yeah, and and so and that's up to, you know, obviously, the plank mission. So.
And we do have planting along there. It's it's not trees because we don't have room, but we do have a hedge. I don't know if you can see which species is called out there, but we do have a hedge on that south line. So we do have some sort of landscape treatment around the entire perimeter. And I just wanted to say it's really in a heavy industrial zone. I think it's all we reasonably can do and maintain the usefulness of the site. Because we we don't just need the buildings, we need room to maneuver large vehicles, and we start putting islands and stuff in the middle, it gets very difficult to do that. So I just wanted to give that a little bit of attention. Did you have any other questions for me as the architect and engineer on this?
Yeah, what type of shrubs are those? Are they ficus or the low, low-growing shrubs or their high-growing shrubs or?
All these.
It's, yeah, they're all desert species, low-growing. Yeah, we did not want messy plants, so we do not have any palaverias. We.
On the back part, refer into the back part.
The back part is all these species here.
Okay.
So, yeah. We do have the bogan vias. So those, those are all the species there. Those are the fastest growing.
Yeah.
So we put those so we get something established relatively quickly. Because the other species will take more time to mature.
Is there a block wall around the entire?
Yes, there is a block wall around the entire.
So six foot.
Yeah, so from the outside on the sides and the back, you'll see the block wall until the landscaping gets significantly established. Yeah, I, a lot of it probably will never get tall enough to see from the outside. But inside it will be landscape and the frontage is landscape. Ultimately, if if the city is successful and the neighboring parcels develop, their projects would bet up against our block walls on all three back and your sides anyway.
It's gonna be the dirt factor. Yeah, it looks nice. I like it.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, I was gonna then allow the applicant to just briefly address the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Again, thank you, Gabriel. I am Jason Williams. The applicant for a proposed building here, just across the street from you guys' facilities there on Enterprise. Are there any questions that you have in regards to what we proposed and what we do for manufacturing? Or anything that might have to do with building these buildings?
Any harsh chemicals? Maybe I could just like methyldehyde, was it modified there? I know that you guys use some of that stuff for gluing the stuff together.
That's a very good question. In fact, where we are now in India, we've been there for 22 years, had a building built there. The air quality control and land management control that would oversee the chemicals stopped coming because we couldn't even spray enough to put a blimp on the radar.
Okay.
And so everything we have is low VOC to almost nothing, and we could never spray, I think, air quality control. Last time it was out seven years ago, so we'd have to spray like 500 gallons.
You have a controlled environment?
Yes, it'd be a spray booth filtered, and what it is mainly is a water-based glue that has an accelerant. It's about an ounce and a half per quart to accelerate the glue to dry, and then it's heat activated. So really, there's no aerosol because it's a water-based glue.
Are you guys manufacturing all this product? Are you guys manufacturing all this product in India currently?
Right now.
It's amazing, nice work.
And we're, uh, we're having growing pains.
Yeah.
And there, that's the, really the need for the second building.
Well, thank you for going to Coachella.
Well, we were recommended to come here, we're happy to come, we're just trying to move forward. So we, we're, as we grow, everybody grows differently. Obviously, our goal would be to double in size, but we. Thought it'd be best to have a tenant that we could do a year lease and if we grow and expand, we just don't renew their lease. So we're looking for the best type of clients to look to, obviously, lease to without. Any impact in regards to traffic, but also bring income, say, you know, food and gasoline stations. Uh, for those that would be renting the storage and we're really looking for those that have the high tickets of motor coaches. That come here during the winter and leave for the summer and need a place to park their unit to protect it.
So are we gonna keep fifty percent?
Actually, we're already going to need a little bit more than the first building, just for our warehousing. And I don't know if they can switch to some of the material. Uh, we actually, and Gabriel came out, which was very nice, we have a lot of storage that we built out of steel around our building. Just to house the material there. Reduce, you know, obviously heat, you know what it's like, it'll deteriorate some of our products, so we have to keep it indoor, so.
Just to let you know, I'm sure you know, plenty of space to expand.
Yes, and that's, that's exactly what our goal is, is to expand and to grow.
So.
With Coachella's help.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just got one quick question, how many employees do you think you're gonna hire in the next, what is prayer, how many employees from local or like?
Uh, every, every, every one of my employees is local. Most of them are born and raised right here in Coachella Valley. Uh, right now, I do only have one employee that lives in Coachella, but in the past, we've had up to twenty five women working for us. That we hired out of the fields and were able to give them a job where they could drop their kids off to school, come to work and then leave enough time to pick their children up. So i- i- if as we expand, we'll be pulling the resources locally, obviously, that would be the best for a lot of the. The locals to work that type of schedule and we've used them before and they've worked great. So to answer your question, I don't know how many, obviously, if if this goes through today, we're. I think about a year out before we might be able to move in and at that point, hopefully, we've grown to the point where we're gonna need to hire at least a half a dozen. Questions, I mean, these are great questions.
The frontage is gonna be the the very decorative desert landscape with the fan palms, right? So I was looking at the different.
Yeah, so you'll have the, so it'll, I I kind of think about it kind of like the front of city hall. Where it's kind of layered, so you have kind of like the palm tree, then you have like the shade tree and then the the plant so. Kind of like a good look, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and what we did is we went and looked at what was across the street. At your, the two locations and the the church there across the street, we wanted to blend in and make, you know, make it look nice. I mean, it's a lot of empty right now, but we want it to all blend in and look good and obviously have drought resistant plants.
What is, are you able to kind of discuss a little bit what your manufacturing facility does, like what's some of the work you've engaged in?
Uh, all our panels are sold to contractors throughout the world. Uh, most of them, uh, here, for instance, uh, this is the Golden Globes that we just had last year on the right.
Okay.
Um, those are our panels in the background. Here on the left is actually a resident, a designer that we've done work for for many years, asked us to do panels in her personal home. And, uh, North Hollywood, so the the panels are decorative, you might see them maybe in. Like a doctor's office in front of the reception desk, it might be the wall where it has their signage on it. Uh, everything is indoors, so it's a decorative panel, they think it ships. We've done, uh, we shipped to Dubai, we've shipped to Canada, Mexico, the islands, we've basically shipped everywhere.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, nice work.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments, did we get any?
None that I'm aware of.
I don't see any. Okay.
Have a, have a quick comment for Gabe, Gabe, so with the new industrial. Uh, building coming in, have have we done a traffic study?
For, for this project, usually, I think they're on a, usually, our city engineer has a condition. About preparing a traffic impact analysis, so they are conditioned to do that. You see it?
Yeah. Read a number fourteen, this is a focused traffic analysis, shall be prepared for the project by an appropriately licensed professional engineer. Part of the preparation of the TA, the engineer shall submit a scoping letter for the TA for the city engineers' proof. My only concern is we have that through way on enterprise and it's not, they don't have a four-way stop. And if, as more buildings come in, right, you know, more traffic and it becomes hazardous, just for. Our pedestrians and things like that. I remember when we would have meetings there, I would come into fifty four and cars either leaving or coming. Through where the, the, the buildings to right, right, would come in, but we have a, we could go straight through. Or turn left onto enterprise.
Yeah.
There's not a stop, so it's kind of like confusing.
And, you know, like, a lot of the truck traffic that you see is, a lot of it's associated right now with motion miss. If you ever like out there in the evening time, uh, at least in my visit to their facilities, there's not really. There's not that level of tra- traffic at all, but maybe they can actually speak to that.
It's still fairly undeveloped, so I don't think, you know, we're dealing with that problem yet, but I think in the future, we're gonna have to address those issues with the traffic.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm, I'm getting at, it's future use.
You haven't closed the public hearing, so I'm presuming I can speak. Um, yeah, so traffic, um. We have no objection to the condition for, um, because not normally under C flip or exempt, we don't delve too deep into traffic. But, um, the city engineer, in his wisdom, and I have the utmost respect for Mr. Simmons, said, uh, we need to at least, you know, look at this and do a scoping letter. And we don't object to that condition. So we're pretty far down south, down enterprise. So we, we don't expect our trip generation to be a significant contributor contributor, even at full build out. If we were to get up to like forty or fifty employees, we're not gonna be a significant trip generator to the intersection up at fifty two. And enterprise. We probably will definitely have some traffic that way, we'll, we'll definitely do the study. Because we know that some workers will come that way just to avoid the upgrade rail crossing on fifty fourth. So some workers will be coming that direction, but we, we know that there will be some that just favor the other route if it's fifty fifty. Because they don't want to deal with the the train if they have to cross that aggregate crossing, so. But if you have traveled over there, you will notice most of of the traffic is generated by the packing houses. And they have a lot of trucks going in and out of there. So I, what will happen is when the traffic study is done, if we do generate enough trips that. It's warranted to look at installing, you know, I I think at that intersection, because it's a T, it would actually be a three-way stop. I, if it triggered warrants for a signal or something, I would be really surprised. But we'll, we'll do this, we'll, we'll do the scoping study first, the city engineer will outline with our traffic consultant what the scope's gonna be for the study. We'll do the study and whatever mitigation measures are identified, we will definitely implement. Just to state it for the record, typically for a project of our size and scope, if. If something was identified that needed to be done there, probably the way that we would mitigate is by parent paying our signalization fees. And the city would probably pursue taking care of any significant traffic, things like a signal or something. If we've reached a point that one is needed at enterprise and fifty through the capital program. Because while we may have a contribution to make to this and when we get the traffic study, if if we do have a contribution above what our normal signalization fees would be. We'd certainly make that, but we are one little parcel out of, you know, dozens of parcels and hundreds of acres there. So we certainly would be very happy to pay our pro rata share of the impacts.
Yeah, that would actually be fifty two and then the thing about it, you have either west or south or west or east, you know, you have access to the expressway. So you would go to fifty two and in an enterprise and you have access to the, to the, to the expressway, either south or career or west.
So it it probably eighty five to ninety percent of the trips would be that direction.
Yeah.
So with, without doing the traffic engineer's job for him, a lot of traffic would go that way. But still, because we only have that many employees and then a few deliveries, we don't expect we're gonna generate one fifty sixty trips. And that's usually not enough to to trigger any warrants, but we will do the study and whatever we're conditioned to do, we will definitely take care of it.
Okay, perfect, yeah, we'll see what the outcome of the traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Yes.
The middle area between the two blocks.
Oh, yes, so. So he asked about fire access and the side aisles and the center aisle all are widened up and meet the radiuses for a fire truck to maneuver. So if any one entrance is blocked, they actually have two others, we're actually only required to have two points of access. So there is ample fire safety access, good question.
Yeah, I looked at that, I I seen that, it was adequate, no spacer.
And, and the other question, frame the question, is, uh, is the elevation of the buildings skewed? Towards enterprise way, it's, it doesn't rain much here, but.
They have a retention base.
Yeah, okay.
But you have the retention.
Yeah, so it's a fair question, what's over the rain's gonna go, so he's, he's asking the question, you know, is, is the rain gonna run off the front and, you know. Wipe out the landscape, so, so everything runs onto the site and is collected and the surface drainage system on the site into an onsite retention basin. And that's up to a one hundred year event, so, good question, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other public comments? Okay, so at this time, at six forty four P M, we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. And does the commission want to make a motion?
Probably we're just, I'll make a motion to, to approve staff recommendation, approving this project.
Can you put staff, staff recommendation up? Thank you.
Adopt, yeah, I'll make a motion, uh, staff recommendation. On adopting resolution number PC twenty twenty two dash seventeen, TPM thirty eight, two, one, eight. And resolution number PC twenty twenty two dash eighteen, condition for number three fifty four. And AR number twenty one, zero, seven, and recommending approval for the industrial development as proposed.
Do we have a second motion?
A second.
Thank you, and can we get roll call, please?
That's Commissioner Liang.
I.
Commissioner Figueroa.
I.
Vice Chair Navarrete.
I.
And Chair Beahan.
I, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move on to item number four. Which is zoning ordinance amendment number twenty two dash zero three. This is for cannabis business streamline code amendments to the Coachella municipal code title five and seventeen. Regarding cannabis business zoning and operation in the city.
Yeah, thank you Chair, members of the planning commission, this item was continued from the last meeting of May fourth. And the planning commission asked for additional information, we have a lot of information that the planning commission requested. There is some information that we were unable to get yet, just, it's gonna take some more time from the school. In terms of getting like a district master plan. Uh, and then we also realize it's more than the Telval Unified School District, the desert sands, you know, Unified School District is in the northern part of the city. Uh, and so we have been in communication with them, C B O S D, they said they don't, they don't have like a project. Projected schools map, uh, but she was gonna, uh, maybe identify a map of, of, of school properties. In the school district, um, I'm aware of a couple of those school properties that would be in the city of Coachella. But I just wanna get the information from him, as far as the desert sand, the unified school district, said they don't have any planned schools right now. City, it's, it's kind of based on like future growth, but at this time, there's no plans for schools. Uh, so we are still waiting information from the Telval Unified School District. Uh, but I did include a list of, uh, list of map of dispensaries in your report. And then housing growth data, pretty early for a new development map that we provided on the website, I'll go over later. And then the revenues from cannabis businesses I provided as an attachment. Uh, so, but the one thing I want to mention, there are some items that we were, I was reviewing with the city attorney's office. That we're just trying to get some clarification on before planning commission makes a decision. Uh, but it'll probably give us some time to be able to get the information from one of the schools. So staff is recommending to you as to the next being of shoot first, so hopefully that's okay.
Do we have to open up the public hearing, I think, yes.
I don't think they do, right, Henry, they can just continue the item.
Okay.
Yeah, let's continue to update certain, which would be the next planning commission meeting, is that okay with you, Gabriel?
Yeah, to June first.
Okay, thank you, Henry. Okay, so we, can we get a motion to continue the item?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to continue the item from June first.
Thank you, and can we get a second?
Oh, second, Commissioner Gundalos' motion.
Thank you, and can we get roll call, please?
Commissioner Liang.
I.
Commissioner Figueroa.
I.
Commissioner, uh, Vice Chair Navarrete.
I.
I. Thank you, so we'll be hearing that again. So we're gonna go ahead and move on to informational, do we have anything from staff?
A couple items, the triple E mixed use project that you reviewed last year, a couple of minutes ago. That the council recently did approve that item, they said to do a second reading on the zone change. So that's some good news that will see some more development in the downtown. I do want to introduce a new staff member that we have at the city and to the audience, so if Eva, if you want to come up to the podium real quick. So Eva Lada, she is our new playing technician, remember, some of you know Russell Maslow, she used to be a playing technician.
Yeah.
Basically, Eva, that will fulfill the playing technician role. We were, uh, she has worked in kind of the development related field, working for PR engineering. But Eva, if you wanted to say a few words.
Hello, nice to meet you all, um, so, yeah, I'm Eva Lada, and I just started working. Three weeks. So, yeah, I'm here, uh, when you'll probably be seeing me more often, and I'm glad to be a part of your team.
Thank you, welcome. So you worked with Lisa?
Yes.
She's a friend of mine. Thank you, welcome.
And so the other thing I was gonna bring up, we have a, something I was gonna show you on our city website. That if you haven't seen it already, just wanna kind of try to do that. So if you've been on the city website and if you went under the department's link, there's a dropdown menu to. For the Development Services Department, I think it's kind of toward the bottom, go to the maps link. Um, and then down below, there's like an image that shows, says Coachella.
Oh, yes.
Maps, so if you open that up. Uh, one thing, I can't figure out why it tells you to.
To sign in, yeah.
Cancel on that.
And it still lets you, okay.
I may want to do it for it, but ours it does. So this map is just kind of like interactive map that shows you some of the development activity going on. So, uh, anything that's red is, is, uh, is pending like approval, so it's proposed. Uh, anything that's blue is, uh, approved projects and green. Anything that's blue is approved projects, green are projects that are under construction. And anything that's purple are completed projects, so mostly it's gonna be recently completed.
Right.
So you can scroll through all those projects at the bottom, it's just like a slideshow. Or you can navigate through the map and say like, hey, I just want to figure out what's in the downtown. And I can go six streets and say like, hey, you know, there's those projects going on, where do those projects, you can click on those numbers and it'll come up with a project. And then if you see where it says triple E mixed use, that says more info, you can actually click that link. And it'll take you to a list of all of the other projects. And then the triple E project has like a little dropdown menu and you can kind of see more detail, how it's through to contact. And the status of the project and pictures of the development. So, you know, we want to populate this with more information, the city of the projects that are going on. Right now, it just has most of the projects that we get a lot of questions about right now, so we, we don't have any of the cannabis development projects on there. Some of the older projects that are still pending, we don't have on there, so we're working to keep them on there, just take a little bit of time to do that. But we're gonna update this map every month and we're always open to feedback, but we hope this gives people an idea of what's going on in the city, so they're more informed.
This one shows that new Billy Smith by Pulte project.
Which?
The Billy Smith by Pulte project, that I saw this fencing going up a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, yeah.
And that's supposed to finish all that rest of that community, right, all the way up to fifty-three?
Okay, yeah. And that project, I kind of want to explain, remember how we did that interpretation of projects, I would have to go back to plank commission? So that one did, and I'm gonna explain why that did go back. So we have an ordinance in the city and this came out of the two thousand eight recession. When, so some of that developed, just stopped, some of the subdivision, right? So the city adopted an ordinance that if the rest of the development was going to develop, that. There are certain thresholds where it requires, or allows that decision to be administrative, right? And it's based on if the, the homes are compatible with existing homes. And then there's another threshold where it has to go back to plank commission, so they met that threshold where their new construction would be compatible with the development. So that's why that was administrative, so I wanted you to know that, so to realize that, you know, we were trying to score the plank commissions, they met that threshold. That's only for subdivisions that were not completed.
Okay.
All needed all of it. So, but any questions on this?
I don't know, I think it's cool.
So far, we had, we counted it about six hundred and ten users, so hopefully you spread the word and let people know that this is available.
Yeah, it's wonderful, really good tool.
That's good, and people are gonna look at it, say they're trying to move down. Find some housing, what's around, what's gonna be developed, what my kid's gonna do later in life. That's there and I think it's a great job.
Yeah, it's a really, really good tool.
Also just comment, what's the, the fountainhead project, Starbucks is it, that's the first building that got built.
Yeah, yeah, if you just want a status update, so Starbucks, their permit approved, we're actually still finalizing the overall landscape plan, the final landscape plan. The plank commission approved the conceptual, so we're trying to get that approved. Aldi, they don't have their building permit yet. It's all fine check, as well as Panda Express, they're still on fine check. When we talk to the developer, they're planning for the Starbucks to open around September.
Okay.
And then the Panda Express and the Aldi, hopefully by Thanksgiving, that's when they're.
So we actually have an understanding with either seven eleven or with a check pan on the gas station with the canopy also.
I cannot disclose anything on that yet.
Okay. All right.
It's, well, until they have like a formal application of this.
Okay, so there's no formal application, okay, we're sorry.
But there, there's, there's someone in discussion.
Okay. Perfect. Yeah.
I have a question, a bit, we. Um, what's going on with the parking return, the, what is it, it used to be Coachella Ranch Marketing or Sears? You know, the shopping center, it's been like that for.
Oh.
Once, nine months, something like that, I don't know, they're gonna complete it soon or?
I don't know. I know they were resurfacing the parking lot, I mean historically, it's been in really bad condition. So the good thing is that they were repaving those parts, so I'm not sure if they're doing it phases.
Have they?
I can report that.
They have, they've, they've done some improvements in that parking lot. But it needs a lot of work.
Yeah. Plant trees, palms, something like that, but.
It needs a lot.
Yeah, it's still rough.
Yeah, the, the, the surface improvements that we were seeing them do, I mean, it's welcome because there was a time where it's really hard to, there are people in there, right, there are a lot of. There's a lot of torn up asphalt, so they're fixing that, but I'll, I'll find out maybe a good idea with the timing is for the rest of the parking lot.
Thanksgiving. Any other items? Okay. Right, so we're gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting at six fifty-eight PM, thank you, everyone.